No.
Call it speeding to order.
I'm not insane after.
Larry Whitaker.
Here.
Michelle Sumner.
Here.
Lisa Woods.
Here.
Gary Daigle.
Here.
Adam Sarnoski. Sean Smalley.
Here.
Debbie Hamilton.
Did he call in advance or anything? I'll fix it.
Okay, introduction of media and don't think we have anybody, anyone.
Oh, there he is.
Wishing to speak before the agency tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. This gentleman on the end is the recorder. Forms are available on the sign-in table in the back of the room. Please turn your cell phones off or silence them. During the meeting, announcement for the Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself. If your full name is not already attached to the device being used, you will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. To use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of a hand. Public comment, the purpose of public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Over there. Consent agenda. For May twelfth, twenty twenty-five minutes, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda for May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Second. To, so we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote please.
Larry Whitaker.
Aye. Yes.
Lisa Woods.
Aye.
Michelle Sumner.
Aye.
Gary Daigle.
Aye.
Adam Sarnoski.
Aye.
Sean Smalley.
Aye.
Debbie Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Agency. Business. Public hearing, budget approval for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Staff report, please.
Evening, agency members. City Finance Director Tammy Trowbridge. Uh, this is a public hearing for resolution. You are twenty twenty-five point oh three for interested parties to speak regarding the approved budget for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. After the hearing, the agency board is being asked to consider approving resolution. You are twenty twenty-five point oh three to adopt the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty-six as approved by the Budget Committee. To also authorize appropriations and request to receive tax increment financing as set forth in the plan. The Budget Committee deliberated and approved the budget in the amount of one million five hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Budget adoption is required before the beginning of the new fiscal year on July first, per Oregon revised statutes, and the options are to adopt the approved budget, recommend revisions to the approved budget, or schedule another meeting for budget adoption prior to July first.
Okay, now I will open up the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to speak. Seeing none, and I've closed the public comment. And. Close the hearing. Okay, resolution, you are twenty twenty-five point zero three through twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six budget adoption. Staff report.
Same one. This is for budget adoption, so I think it's ready for a vote unless you guys are motion, unless you folks have any questions regarding that.
Marshall, please.
I move that we approve you are twenty twenty-five point oh three, twenty, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget for. Oh, Sutherland.
Second.
I second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. You are twenty twenty-five point zero three for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget adoption discussion. Anybody? Vote.
Larry Whitaker.
Aye.
Michelle Sumner.
Aye.
Lisa Woods.
Aye.
Gary Daigle.
Aye.
Adam Sarnoski. Sean Smalley.
Aye.
Debbie Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. With no further business, we are adjourned.
Stand for flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Whitaker.
Sure.
Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle. Counselor Sarnoski.
Here.
Counselor Smalley.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Sumner.
Here.
Any media present?
Hey, anyone wishing to speak for city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign-in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself if this full name is not already attached to the device being used. If you will, you will be unable to unmute yourself. Public comments will only be taken if prior notification was given to the city recorder. For public comment, the purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off-agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Public comment is a time for the council to hear about the thoughts or concerns of the community. It is not a time for a dialogue or back and forth with the council or city staff. Other than asking possible clarifying questions, neither the council or staff will typically reply to specific comments or questions raised by members of the public. To the extent that response is necessary, the council will have city city staff do their best to do so at or before the next meeting. Although such timeframes are not always possible to be met, the council appreciates the time taken by the public to provide comments and desires to hear your thoughts and concerns. However, to be able to run our meetings efficiently and to protect the rights of all certain involved, the city needs to utilize this time as a period to of receiving rather than providing information. Thank you for your understanding. Onto consent agenda, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Do I have?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? I'm voting.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry about that. I mispronounced it because it was written here, but it's for the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, not March twelfth.
Oh.
Do we need to do it again?
Um, yeah, probably if we didn't say consent agenda.
Yeah, it's May twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Did you screw up again?
Mm-hmm. Uh, Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
I'm a council business. Public hearing, resolution twenty twenty-five point oh six supplemental budget. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Staff report, finance director.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tammy Trowbridge, City Finance Director. Uh, this is a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-five point oh six for interested parties to speak regarding the proposed changes to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. After the hearing, council is being asked to consider approving this resolution to adopt the supplemental budget adjustment for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five as described herein. These two fund adjustments were unforeseen at the time of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. What that it was prepared and at that time, at the time that I did the supplemental budget last month, we also didn't know about these things. So, um, these just came to light in the last few weeks. The initial payment on the ladder truck purchase, which was approved by council in April, is actually due June fifteenth. I was planning on it being due in the new fiscal year, but they needed to have it done within sixty days of approving the financing. So, so that needed to be accommodated in the budget and also the timing of the expenditures on the police and fire, police department seismic grant. It's all within the scope of the grant, but the timing is different than originally projected. So they are going gangbusters right now on that facility and so, um, we're, they're going to pull down more of that grant in this fiscal year than was originally projected. So the supplemental budget is necessary to facilitate these adjustments. After the budget hearing, the options are either to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five point oh six, the supplemental budget adjustment, or not to adopt it. And after considering any public comment, the suggested motion is that we move to adopt that resolution as presented.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open public hearing and open up for any public comment at this time. Do you have public comment on this specific thing?
Yeah.
Okay. No problem. No problem. Okay, I will go ahead and close public hearing. And then we'll move to resolution twenty twenty-five point oh six supplemental hearing budget fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Uh, before we do that, can I just declare a possible, uh, conflict of interest for this? On here. Not this one?
No, just when it comes to adopting the police procedure. And it's not a possible, it is.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other than that, you're good.
All right. Do I have a motion for the resolution twenty twenty-five point oh six supplemental budget?
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five point oh six supplemental budget fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
Adjust.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Take, move to vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Didn't take the police.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
So how is she gonna close? Where is it at? Okay, if you don't got it, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Okay. Under public hearing, state revenue sharing, staff report.
Mayor and council, Tammy Trowbridge, City Finance Director. Again, you're going to be tired of hearing from me. Most of this agenda is mine. I was trying to make it a world record agenda items, but I didn't quite get there. So this is a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-five point oh seven for interested parties to speak regarding the city's election to receive state shared revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. After the hearing, council is being asked to consider approving that resolution. So this is the second of two required public hearings on the city election to receive state shared revenues. Cities and counties that levy property taxes are eligible for periodic distributions from monies raised from state taxes on motor vehicle fuels, tobacco products, and alcoholic beverages. These distributions from the state of Oregon are based on formula established by the state, and the rules governing these distributions are part of the Oregon revised statutes. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, these revenues are projected to be ninety-five thousand approximately. And after this public hearing, you will have the option to either adopt resolution twenty twenty-five point oh seven or not to adopt it. And you will see that this is kind of a two-part process. You've got resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven, which is your election to receive those revenues and resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight is you certifying that we actually provide those city services. So it's kind of complicated. It looks like we're doing the same thing over and over, but there are two specific purposes for these things. So public hearing for twenty twenty-five oh seven.
Okay. At this point, we'll open the public hearing and ask for any public comment.
Sorry, what?
Do you need me to come up? Yes.
What are those funds gonna be used for?
Your name first.
Down, down at our three fifty West Sixth Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and what are those funds to be used for?
They are part of the general fund budget. They're part of the revenues included in the general fund budget in the twenty-five, twenty-six.
So meaning general fund, you can use that money for whatever you see fit?
No, it, it, they're out, there are allocations set out in the budget that was approved by the Budget Committee on the nineteenth, and that is, this is part of the finances to allow city services to proceed.
Give you an again, we get state revenue sharing through various means. Gas tax that goes for roads and transportation. We get alcohol sales tax that comes into the general fund. Uh, transient lodging tax that goes for tourism, marketing, anything that is state revenue sharing that they get, they collect on behalf of, on our behalf and give us our proportionate share. They're small amounts, but they help.
So in reality, some of that money be can, can be used for the fire department and the police department.
They already are. Yeah, they take almost all of it. In fact, they do take all of it. Except for those that are dedicated and required to be used.
And is there like a proposal that you guys are already seeing this money going towards? Like, do you already like have a, well, we're gonna allocate it to this, this and this?
Yeah, it's going to public safety.
Thank you, Jerry. It's always a pleasure.
Any other public comment? At this time, I'd like to close public hearing and looking for a motion for election to receive state revenue sharing.
Can we kill both at once?
They have to be separate.
I'll make a motion for resolution number twenty twenty-five point oh seven. I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Is there any reason not to take this money from the state? Like, why would anybody argue?
Exactly.
It blows my mind. So we want to say no to ninety-five thousand dollars for our city?
Thank you.
My color.
It's just a requirement to go through this process.
I get it.
We do it every year.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under resolution number twenty twenty-five point oh eight, certifying city services.
Mayor and council, Tammy Trowbridge, this is, uh, being asked, being asked of council to approve resolution twenty twenty-five point oh eight, certifying city services for the purpose of receiving state revenue sharing funds. This is the second of the two resolutions that I referred to that are required by the state of Oregon in order to receive state revenue sharing funds. After holding the public hearing, which we did, the city needs to adopt this resolution, certifying that the city of Sutherland provides at least four of the seven qualifying municipal services as listed in the resolution. And again, those services are police protection, fire protection, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision control, and one or more utility services. And so the suggested motion is that you move that resolution twenty twenty-five point oh eight be adopted as presented.
I'll make that motion. Well, this is always right.
Yes.
Twenty forty-five, sure, wait. Can we, uh, go this?
Have a motion in a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-five point oh eight, certifying city services as presented. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under public hearing for adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six city budget, staff report.
Hearing council, this is a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-five point oh nine for interested parties to speak regarding the approved budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. After the hearing, council is being asked to consider approving resolution twenty twenty-five point oh nine to adopt the approved budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six as approved by the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee approved the budget in the amount of forty-two million forty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And this is the second of two required public hearings that must be conducted prior to council considering the approved budget for adoption. Options are after the public hearing to either adopt the resolution and levy the property taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, or not to adopt the resolution. Um, or to amend the resolution. And after considering any public comment, uh, the rec, suggested motion is that you move to approve for budget adoption, and you will see in the process of your script that the process is slightly different this year.
Okay, I now open the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment in reference to the adoption of our city budget. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. And the first part, we're breaking it into a couple sec, sections due to some, uh, conflict of interest. Our first one will be the adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six police budget. Do I have anyone that has a conflict of interest that needs to be disclosed?
Yes, I have a conflict of interest. I'll abstain from any type of voting in this section.
Do I have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six police budget?
Make a motion to approve. Police budget.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor. Mayor, sorry, if I just interrupt real quick, I just want to put on the record that the reason for Counselor Woods' conflict is because she has a relative who works in the police department. I know the ethics commission rules, they want you to explain the basis for the conflict. So I just want to make sure that's clear, so there's no, uh, ambiguity or, or questions raised.
Okay, thank you.
You're doing it all over again like you did the other?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Under resolution number twenty twenty-five point oh nine, adoption of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six remaining city budget. Do I have a motion?
Move that we approve the adoption, or approve the budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
The remaining budget.
The remaining budget.
Yeah. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the adoption, the remaining budget of the twenty-five, twenty-six remaining city budget as presented. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski. Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Onto the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-five point oh nine. Do we have a staff report on this?
It's the same as the public hearing, but, uh, is the Budget Committee approved the budget in the amount of forty-two million forty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars on May nineteenth. And so it is now required that the council, the governing body, actually adopts the budget by the approval of this resolution.
And confirming this is everything altogether. So I, at this point, do, does anyone have a conflict of interest?
At this time, I will also abstain from this section of, uh, the vote due to a conflict of interest because my husband is a police officer with the police department, so I will abstain from voting.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five point oh nine?
I'll make the motion, I'll be adopted.
Second?
I'll try it though.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Let's vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under ordinance one-one-zero-one, second reading and adoption of updated public contracting rules. City reporter, to read ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city of Sutherland amending Sutherland Municipal Code, section two point three six, and updating its public contracting rules.
Staff report, finance director.
Council's being asked to review and approve this update for the city's public contracting rules, which had not been updated since two thousand and five. The Oregon legislature has adopted a number of amendments to the public contracting code since our rules were last updated. Sections have been added, requirements have changed, and dollar thresholds have increased. The city council had previously authorized me to move ahead with this with the city attorney, and I have also reached out to the fin, finance committee. And we arrived at some modified thresholds, but we are implementing all of the compliance verbiage that the, the city attorney put together for us. Um, changes also to the city noticing practices in terms of electronic advertising, and it expands the criteria to follow for sole source procurement, among other things. Um, this is the second reading. Your options are to approve the ordinance updating the city's public contract rules as amended, or not to approve the ordinance. Or approve the ordinance with changes would also be possible.
I have a motion.
Move that we approve ordinance eleven oh one, updating city's public contracting rules and recommend.
Second. I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under ordinance eleven oh two, second reading, adoption amending sewer service system requirements. City reporter, read ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the city of Sutherland amending section thirteen point one-two point three-six-zero of the Sutherland Municipal Code, sewer service system requirements for special removal traps.
Staff report.
Mayor, council, here's one public words, um. This is, uh, the exact same report we gave last month that we're just trying to add and bring ourselves up to date with our fog program or pass those increases from restaurants and it puts a little more, um, there's a few more requirements on the owners of these establishments to keep their grease traps in order. And, uh, let our previous reports in.
Thank you.
Unless there's any questions.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion. Is it, uh, approve ordinance eleven oh two? Amending sewer system. Sewer service system requirement.
Make a, uh, second, the ordinance one-one-zero-two amending section thirteen point twelve, point three-six-zero.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Non-terrestrial water treatment plant roof contract approval. Staff report.
Mayor Council, um you know, we just finished that uh our uh plan improvement project out there. Part of that was redoing the roof. It's leaky and it's old. Um so rather than have a contractor do it, the city to save on their ten or fifteen percent, we decided to put this out there ourselves. And um um noble roofing was a low bidder by a considerable margin. Uh at a fifty something, about sixty thousand dollar bid, they bid forty-one, so um our suggested motion is to award the contract to noble roofing for price forty-one thousand.
Where are they located?
Noble, Roseburg, anything.
I have a motion.
Got you.
Move that we award the roofing contract to noble roofing for the re-roofing of the sewage triple plant non-pro. Water, water, water treatment, sorry.
I don't want to get that mixed up.
That's it.
I'll send you.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
How how many beds do we get?
Three, three.
How big is the roof?
Miss Farpeet?
Yeah.
Do not have that in front of me. That's a pretty good size of roof.
Let's vote.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Woods.
Aye.
Counselor Daigle.
Aye.
Counselor Sarnoski.
Aye.
Counselor Smalling.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to reports, city reporter.
Mayor and Council, uh recently, uh we decided to forego the or you decided to forego the recruitment firm for the city manager position. Um due to that, uh the mayor had brought up um the potential of having a subcommittee um to come up with a plan for posting of the position and creating timelines in a process. Um so it was suggested by the mayor to request two members of the council that would like to join her and a few members of the staff to help with that. Um so we're looking to see if there's two volunteers that would like to participate.
Uh we're starting with the the recruitment flyer that we'd like to get done fairly quickly to get that out. And then we can move from there.
Who who's the two volunteers?
Um Debbie and Lisa.
I'll do that too. If you want.
I think we got two right now, and then after just the flyer, then we can look forward to see how best, see what we want to do for uh including everybody up to that.
Okay.
It's just just making the recruitment flyer.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I want to state that my feelings are extraordinarily hurt that you called on the city recorder instead of me. So let the minutes reflect. I'm crying right now.
You actually said you did not want it to happen.
I know.
Uh the other thing um that I wanted to bring up that the I spoke with the mayor today about was um the potential of the idea of having a quarterly town hall meeting prior to a council meeting. Um so once a quarter, having a town hall prior to when we start um a council meeting. And see if what you guys thought on that.
That's right.
That'd be good.
So I kind of thought it would be a great way to include our uh our citizens a little more um uh bringing ideas that what we're thinking about, uh sharing, sharing um what's going on in the city. Uh if people have questions about things, they can bring them forward. It may be an hour before council. Um every quarter, people will we can pass on, you know, that it's happening, and it's always a certain, certain uh time, people will know about it. It's I'm hoping that it won't be quite as much hardship for staff and us because it'll be the same night as council. Um so I kind of wanted those inputs on that.
Thanks for that, yeah.
Everybody's saying yes.
Okay.
People just have to show up.
Well, and like we can put it on the website, we can put it on the leaderboard, we can put it on, you know, social media, uh put it maybe in the line on the utility bill, things like that, so. It it does work out there. So maybe we can talk about when to start it. It would be good, since you guys are setting it up a little bit, so. Okay?
That's all I have.
Right. Well, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
City manager report.
Um nothing.
Nothing. Council comments. Remember, monthly meeting time is limited. Those ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Start with Counselor President Whitaker.
I'm gonna pass first.
Okay. Counselor Woods.
Okay, I've got a few things um this time. Um this this week's been a little busy, and I've had some people asking some questions, and so I've been to city council, city hall a few times this week asking some pertinent questions, so I thought I would I wanted to be transparent, just answer the questions as I've asked them. Um so one of the questions that was asked to me was, how was the property at Oak Street Commons purchased? And the answer that I got was it was purchased through the um so the water reserve fund, and then also the wastewater reserve fund.
Loans.
Loans. They're they were loans, which will be paid back once the properties have been built on the land. In addition to that, there was the other portion of it was came from the um Tammy, help me out here.
Public Works.
Public Work.
Equipment Reserve.
Equipment Reserve, which will also be paid back because the state said that we could not have a reserve amount in that amount, so it went back to the general fund, and we used that, which will also be paid back once those properties have been built. So that answers that question, hopefully. Um hopefully, it's not too muddled. And then the other question was, how was the Everett property purchased? Um that was purchased through the urban renewal grants, so those are not purchased through the general funds. And then also someone was asking, that was to grow our downtown region. And an additional question was about our leaderboard, which I'm hoping that someone was going to find out about what we're going to be doing about the leaderboard downtown, so.
The one by the uh by the by the Central Park?
It is going to be repurposed, or if it can still be reused. Maybe someone answered that one. There's where it's.
The um, do you do you refer to the uh school?
The. Yes.
It's just gonna be day commission.
It is gonna be permissioned because it's.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh Counselor Daigle.
Thank you for doing that. We said that's a good idea. People need to know. And I don't want to infringe on you, Michelle, but are you gonna speak to what on board was saying about Sutherland? At the first citizen banquet.
Oh, well, you can go ahead, and if you if I think of something.
We were sitting at a table with Virgil on burned paper presented, and at one point, he was talking to Michelle, and he said how much he appreciated Sutherland. He really loves Sutherland. And he was commenting how the city of Grover has never invited him to their their first citizen banquet. And he actually tried to join their chamber. Nobody ever responded to him. Anyhow, he he was really asking about how much he loved Sutherland.
Awesome.
And you know what I did do?
Okay.
Thanks, Gary. Counselor Sarnoski.
I just want to say thank you for the support. We got our permit. So hopefully, everything should be on and going, but in two weeks, you guys can go watch me make a fool of myself if you want.
Nice, uh and uh
there you are right now.
Virgil said he was going as well.
Good. I'm really looking forward to it.
Yes.
Purpose of the video or tape, say what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, people don't.
Jet ski races.
Yeah, there'll be jet ski races, the jet.
First twenty seven. Free admission, so anybody who wants to come on.
Also, we're taking vendors, like food vendors, stuff down there because um there were some local vendors that the were asking.
I don't know yet. There's so the Platte is Sutherland Water Control District, which is a special district, and it's there's issues with it being open and access to the public, so you can't really section portions off and, you know, okay, well, we're gonna charge vendors, we're gonna charge food trucks, so it just makes it difficult. Sometime in the future, maybe, possibly, but this year, we're just kind of hoping to find out how many people show up and what turnout's gonna be. Hopefully, it's big.
Pack of lunch.
Yeah. I did try to get some food trucks out there, but it we're competing with Hemp Fest and Sasquatch Festival, so we're not gonna win. The food trucks are going.
And uh and uh Wolfstock.
Right, is that same weekend? Oh, wow. No wonder nobody wants to come out. But anyways, thank you for the support. I appreciate it.
They can do both.
Yeah.
They can, yeah. Counselor Smalling.
Um our uh our emails are posted on the city, right? Like on the website, like people want to get hold of us, can email us anytime, anywhere. I think people, if they can't come down and see us, they should at least do that when they have these questions, because they're going to Facebook.
Right, right.
And posting stuff, that's so not true. And I am close, you know, they're not researching anything, they're just posting stuff out there and causing all kinds of problems. Yeah, just email us anytime.
They they get my, they they call me.
Yeah. That's probably the best, but yeah, we're always there. Reach out, answer any questions.
I do encourage people, I I've said it on Facebook, that, you know, call, call us if you have questions.
We're easy to find.
Definitely. Anything else?
Oh, no.
Counselor Hamilton.
Um
Don't copy it.
They're just celebrating their twenty-eighth anniversary, him and his wife, so happy anniversary.
Today. Uh Saturday.
Um anyway, the first citizens banquet was very nice, and it was good to see a lot of the council there. Um and Pat was there. Other than that, I was surprised that there wasn't more there, but um.
I was all there.
Huh?
I was all there.
You were. Captain Sorensen's there.
Well, I know, but he was one of the nominees. Congratulations. He and John Roush were both nominations nominated for outstanding service, right? Is that the one you were on?
Man of the Year.
I'm man of the year, Debbie.
That's right.
Come on. John John was nominated for inspiration winner.
Oh, okay. Well, some of that stuff wasn't even in the thing, but anyway. Anyway, it was very nice. It was very hot, very hot.
Very hot.
Um but but it was good, so anyway, that's all I have.
And yes, it was a very nice evening at the awards banquet. I congratulate all the winners.
And you were nominated.
I was nominating too, yes. But Kurt and I didn't win, so congratulations on your nominations.
Terry Brock opened me. You won a drawing.
But I won a drawing, yes. Nice. And um and I just wanted to remind everybody that uh summer has started. We have a lot of events coming up. Like like uh Sarnoski said about the races and Wolfstock, and uh I think in two weeks is the start of the summer officially, because everything is breaking loose that day. Um and then we have quite a few in July, so I encourage people to come out and enjoy the summer in downtown Sutherland, because it's gonna be relaxed. And hopefully, it won't um be too hot.
Can I make an addition?
Yes.
Since it's before our next council meeting, Music Up Central starts July third this year.
July third.
Wow.
Who's the first band?
They're called The Vandaliers.
Okay, what kind of music?
Uh country punk, so I'm not sure.
I can't imagine those two going together.
Oh, I can. Yeah.
Okay.
Come on, have fun with us.
I don't think anybody asked your opinion.
I know.
Yeah, I liked your opinion.
Yeah, it was good.
Okay.
Who do you think?
So on to public comment. The purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. Anna, it's your turn. You're up. Just come on up, state your name and what city you live in.
My name is Anna Perry, and I live at one thousand East Central Avenue, space forty-six Silver Glen. And I'm here to, when I saw the safety fee thing, I thought, yay, not. Because a nine-dollar fee added to every senior citizen in the park is way too much. They are on a fixed income, so many of them just have their social security. And as you know, all kinds of things are going up. The state's talking about doubling the gas tax. The utility bills have gone up, the gas and the electric bills. And it's really, really creating a very scary situation for all of these people. I don't know if you've ever been in a home. I worked for a utility company, retired from one. But in auditing a home where the bills were too high and the people couldn't afford to pay their bill, the elderly had empty cans in their cupboard to make it look like they were doing okay. And this is what it's gonna amount to here. This is where it's leading. There are ways that the budget can be cut. For example, the new city hall, why don't you have artificial turf? When there is a drought, you're gonna ask everybody to cut back on their water. And when you cut back on the water, you have to get the revenue from someplace, so you raise the rates. And this is uh one of those kinds of things. And safety, to me, I thought about Hawthorne Street. Speaking of safety, there's a pothole right there by the market. It's been filled, I don't know how many times, with rock. It needs to be dug out squarely, tamped, and asphalt put in that hole once and for all. Because when you're driving north on Hawthorne, you dodge it, so essentially, you could be hit head-on by a car turning onto that street. I think it's a real safety hazard. To me, that's safety, but um I just wanna let it be known that our park is definitely against any kind of increase like this. It's more than they can handle, and we know who will get the blame for it. It will be our landlord. We'll get the blame for the raise in the fee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um I wanted to mention that I believe your agenda is hypocritical. It says in this little box, members of the audience who wish to address the council will be invited to do so. Speakers must use the microphone stating their name, address prior to addressing the council. It doesn't state that fill out a form. It just states that I can come up here and use the microphone, raise my hand. Thank you.
Okay, so still. Thank you. This time, Legerd.